Not too bad. How was the meeting? Want to hear more about it? Are we ready? Very good. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council regular agenda for this Tuesday, February eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five. Welcome to those of you who are here in person and to those of you watching from Zoom at the comfort of your home. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the order.
Here. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Here.
Member Pearson.
Here. Present. Thank you very much. Now, if you please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence for the servicemen and women serving this nation at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to Our Nation's Flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome, and thank you for joining us tonight. The first section of tonight's agenda is our proclamation and presentation section, and tonight we're pleased to have a business showcase for State Farm Insurance. And I believe, there she is, Juanita Lanyar is here, the agent with State Farm. So if you join me at the podium, we'll present a certificate of recognition, and then we'll have a video, and you get a few moments to say a few things.
Thank you.
Well, we are always pleased to present these business showcases to our local business owners in town because they mean so much to us. Your participation in our business community and what you bring by way of economic activity and employment and just goodwill to the downtown area, we appreciate that. Juanita has been selling insurance in Lakewood for a few years, but she is a homegrown local. After growing up and attending high school here, she returned to start her own business in the city. Now Juanita and her team give back to the Lakewood community by not only providing the best customer service possible, but through volunteering and providing scholarships to local youth. We always appreciate anyone who gives back to their community, but it's even more special when someone returns home to Lakewood to start their own business. And for these reasons, Juanita Lanyar, State Farm, has been chosen as the February two thousand and twenty-five Business Showcase. And we have a certificate here, Juanita, that says, City of Lakewood's Business Showcase for February two thousand and twenty-five, Juanita Lanyar, State Farm, is recognized as the February two thousand and twenty-five City of Lakewood Business Showcase due to her dedication to providing outstanding service to the residents of Lakewood, including both their professional and community services. So thank you so much, and I believe we'll get a picture in just a minute, but the clerk has a video, and we'll roll right now, and then we'll give you a chance to say hello.
My name is Juanita Lanyar, and I own a State Farm office here in Lakewood. So we help customers manage the rest of everyday life, and we do that by first getting to know them. We take a holistic approach. The people we know the best, we are able to help the best. One of the things that make me very proud is the fact that I have a big team, six people I get to employ and enjoy working with every day. They are really the reason that we're here. They do the work and take care of the customers, and so I would have to say that my team is amazing. We like to give back in many ways, both financially through sponsorships and things like that, but we also believe in giving back by volunteering. We're all big volunteers in the community. I love doing business in Lakewood. I grew up out here. I went to high school out here, so being able to have an office out here with local community, people that I know and trust and people who know me, it's been wonderful.
Thank you very much for this honor. It's a privilege to be able to have a business and be able to employ people here in Lakewood where I grew up, and I just appreciate you guys showcasing me. So thank you very much.
You want to round?
Yeah.
Next, we have the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically, and for purposes of retaining a transparent record, we ask the clerk to read the names of those who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor Whelan, we received no written comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you simply approach the mic, give your name and residence, and then the three-minute clock will begin. Virtual comments are also welcomed here in Lakewood. You can provide live virtual comments by joining the Zoom meeting by calling the telephone number two five three two one five eight seven eight two, entering the meeting ID number eight six eight seven two six three two three seven three. Upon entering the room, please use the raise the hand feature so that the clerk or myself can notice you're here and call on you in due course. So first tonight, I'll call on those who are appearing via Zoom, followed by those who are here in person, who signed up and signed the sign-in sheet or otherwise are here interested in providing comments. So Madam Clerk, first, those who are appearing virtually, I see a couple of hands raised. First is apparently the Gary Oak Coalition.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. This is Christina Manetti. I'm speaking on behalf of the Gary Oak Coalition tonight, and which is based in Lakewood. In recent weeks, the Gary Oak Coalition has reported on code violations related to Gary Oaks and other valuable, another valuable native tree, Madrona. The violations related to large piles of dirt being piled up at the base of these trees, which were unprotected by any fence as is required during construction, as per Lakewood municipal code. We first reported this violation near the intersection of Silicon Boulevard and Gravel Lake Drive in November, and the pile had probably been there since October. Nothing was done about this gigantic pile of dirt, and so we wrote again. We also, although I was told that something would be done, we also wrote about a large pile of dirt at the construction site adjacent to St. John's on Bridgeport, where also the trees were not protected by any fences as required by code. Finally, we were told by Mr. Rymac that the large, approximately four hundred-year-old Gary Oak was deemed to have severe butt rot near the intersection with Silicon Boulevard, and the developer had applied for a permit to cut it down. He had already cut down two other, the two other largest Gary Oaks to build apartments and damage other ones. The developer also paved over the critical root zones of more oaks on the other side of the property, just as he did across the street, where he paved right up to the trunks of the Gary Oaks for the parking lot, which will lead to their suffering and probable death decades from now. We were told this is all fine because the developer was vested under the old code, of course. We are asking that the city now double down and make a real effort to protect the Gary Oaks that are left in this city. Hundreds and hundreds have been cut down in recent years for warehouses, city roundabouts, and sidewalks, among other things. The city's words about protecting Gary Oaks and other trees ring empty. The city needs to have its inspectors checked to make sure that the trees are being properly protected before any work can proceed. When inspecting rental properties, the city needs, for example, to require that trees are free of ivy. We have found that this is incredibly difficult to gain permission to remove ivy from absentee landlords' properties in Lakewood. The city has facilitated the destruction of hundreds and hundreds of these valuable, very slow-growing native trees that are one of our keystone species in this region. Now, the city must try to make up for the damage it has wrought by vigorously protecting Lakewood's wonderful remaining Gary Oaks. Please do let us know how we can help you achieve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand, looks like you individually, Ms. Manetti, is that correct?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So yes, my name is Christina Manetti. I'm speaking on my own behalf. The past twelve years have not actually been an era of wonderful growth and development in Lakewood. It has not been, become a healthier, more vibrant community. Watching what has happened in Lakewood over the last dozen years has been like watching a horror show. Except that one can't just walk out of the cinema into the daylight and breathe a sigh of relief. It is a horror that is ongoing, and it would appear never-ending. It has been a time of extreme destruction in our, of our natural environment in Lakewood. The best thing we have here, the natural beauty of our lakes and trees, the conifers and deciduous alike, this is the thing that the people in the city hall should have fought tooth and claw to preserve. They should have said, yes, you can build nice things here so people can have nice places to live, but you may not destroy the very thing that we cherish most. They didn't say this because people in the city hall clearly do not cherish it most. They don't care. What do they care about? They care about, for example, getting grants. Yes, it seems to have focused on getting grants. Getting grants is easy. There's some lists somewhere, undoubtedly. You look through it to see what they're giving out grants for, and then you make something up in your town to get the grant. I know about grants. Giving grants for sidewalks, okay, there's no sidewalk here, so let's get that grant. The grant doesn't say that you have to put sidewalks where there are Gary Oak trees, hundreds of years old, but that was where the census tract ended, so they just had to put them there, as I was told by a city employee. We didn't need those sidewalks there, and certainly didn't need them if it involved cutting down protected Gary Oaks. I don't know if there was a grant for the roundabout on Hipkins Road that involved killing a Gary Oak hundreds of years old, which WDFW said should be protected. Whether or not it involved a grant, doing these projects also gives the city employees a raison d'être, a reason to exist. It justifies their salaries and positions. My father, who has seen a lot in his long life, always says when he sees this kind of destructive waste, like the demolition of the Tensas Library, these people have too much money. Maybe we should call Elon Musk in here to cut out this sort of waste that we're seeing in Lakewood City Hall. Maybe that's the only hope to save what we have left in our unique Lakewood. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, any other hands raised to provide virtual public comment?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay. Seeing no additional virtual hands raised, I'll turn to those who are here physically. The first is Hallie McCurdy.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Council. I'm Hallie McCurdy. I live in Stanaway, but most of you know me as the Deputy Fire Chief of West Pierce, but I'm here tonight to talk on behalf of Partners for Parks. Partners for Parks is very proud to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city to cover the costs associated with the design and engineering of the H barn. We're looking forward to moving from a schematic design to a more detailed layout of the H barn. This will allow the city to have a better estimate of costs, so as we move forward with this project, we know it's been a really long road to get here, but we are getting so close. The community is incredibly excited about this project, so excited that since the last time we were here talking to you guys about the project, we've raised an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are so close. We are two point seven million dollars towards our three point five million dollar goal. We are nearing the finish line. So we're just really thankful for the support that the council has given this project, and if you guys get a chance to talk to people around the community, they are very excited about this project and like looking forward to having events and weddings and fundraisers and the farmer's market and all the different things that we're going to be able to have at the H barn. People are really excited about it. So that's, that's my quick little update. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. McCurdy. That's the last individual who has signed in on the sign-in sheet, but let that not hold you back. If you'd like to provide public comment during the public comment portion of tonight's agenda, now is the opportunity. Anyone else like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of February third, two thousand and twenty-five. B, motion number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero nine, authorizing the execution of an agreement with SMS Cleaning, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, twenty-three dollars for custodial services. C, motion number two thousand and twenty-five dash ten, authorizing the city manager to to accept sponsorship donations in the amount of sixty-seven thousand from Amazon, Twin Star Credit Union, Virginia Mason, Franciscan Health, Pierce Transit, Washington State Employee Credit Union, Vibrant Schools and Friends to support City of Lakewood programs and events. D, motion number two thousand and twenty-five dash eleven, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lakewood and Partners for Parks to support payment of A and E Services for the Fort Silicon Park H Barn Project. E, motion number two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Graham Baba Architects in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars for design services for the Fort Silicon Park H Barn Project. F, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, one, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, meeting minutes of November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to remove motion number two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve for discussion.
Very good. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda at this time minus item E, motion two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve? So moved?
Exactly.
It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda minus item E. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda as presented minus item E, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda minus item E has been adopted. We now turn to item E, motion two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve. Madam Clerk?
Motion number two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Graham Baba Architects in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars for design services for the Fort Silicon Park H Barn Project.
Thank you, and truth be told, I asked Councilmember Bell to remove this to provide our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Osworth, to give us just a flavor of the process and an overview and the excitement behind the selected provider.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I'm excited to share this information with you on this, this agenda item. So we've been talking about restoring the barn since I've been with the City of Lakewood, since just about incorporation, and I think the community is excited about moving forward. We've certainly taken several steps forward with feasibility studies and cooperative agreements and such. The public-private partnership is pretty unique, and I think the council took took great care to make sure that this was done thoughtfully and to make sure it's the right time and the right place. So when we were given permission to move forward with an RFQ, we did that to find the best team possible to put this project together. We had nine proposals that were submitted. We went through and reviewed them. We had internal and external people helping review that. We came up with four proposals that we did interviews for, and the team that came out on top was Graham Baba, and they are a team out of Seattle. And I have to say that they came with unique ideas, so much expertise that can help us move this forward in a really efficient way. One of their subconsultants, the structural engineer, is a gentleman named Greg Coons. He's from a firm called SSF, I think it is, but he was on probably five of the nine proposals because he is the barn guy. He's the barn guy, and he has done so much work that even just the suggestions that he made during the presentations gave us such confidence that we can move forward with this and efficiently and not having to necessarily start over or rip everything off. And so I think we're going to just do great. We do understand it's a big expenditure. It's a big commitment, and so the contract is tied up into different phases so that at thirty percent, which would be a much more detailed, just how we believe it may work, and have a good cost estimate that we could come back and talk to council and make sure everybody's comfortable with the next steps. We do plan to have community, a design charrette, probably out at the pavilion where the community can come out and really talk about, or maybe buy the barn if the weather's nice, come out and really talk about the barn. What's there now? What are the goals? What are the dreams? Just from the schematic design and the talks that we've had over the last many years, the idea of creating a space, it's kind of a medium-sized space, there's just nothing like that in the City of Lakewood, that's accessible in this great setting, that could be so many things, from classes, from senior center activities to private events and activities, you know, there's just a big gamut. The idea's always been that it would be multi-use as possible so that we can get the biggest bang for our community buck, so to speak, and that it really, the goal has always been, you know, access and equity for everybody in our community. The idea is to have a business plan and options so that it is accessible to everybody as much as possible. Definitely meets the council's goals of historic preservation. It definitely meets the goals of economic impact and economic development. So I think just going in, it's meeting a lot of the goals in your strategic plan, and we're excited to move into this next phase of development. And then, of course, having an organization And then, of course, having an organization such as Partners for Parks paying for it all, you know, putting those resources that they've worked really hard to raise to cover those costs. It's really a win-win right now for everybody.
Fantastic. So as I saw the proposal in the item for tonight's consideration, there's a timeline for, you know, 30% design, 60, 90.
Yeah.
At some point along the line, is it fair to assume that the council will be involved, at least having a chance to look at where we are, 90% design?
Yeah, well, probably at 30%. So by June, we should be, based on the timeline that's presented, if everything goes as planned, council would certainly be invited to any kind of community design charrette and come in and have their opportunity to share or listen to what people are talking about. I think that's really important. And then at 30%, when there's really more of a schematic design that we think will work for that space without, with the facilities that we have, and a good cost estimate that's built into that 30%, then we'll have a really good idea of what's next, and council can help make those decisions. It is council's decision.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Dodsworth? Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dodsworth, the 30% design seems to be a significant milestone. Which month do you estimate that, reaching that milestone?
According to the plan, the timeline that's there, right around late May, early June. Sooner if we get really on top of it, but right about that time, probably about May, early June.
Okay, thank you. And how does that align with the normal suspense to submit lodging tax funding requests for 2026?
Lodging tax applications are typically in, they're due early August, and the presentations are in late August, and then council makes those considerations in November when they do the budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ms. Dodsworth? Thank you, and I appreciate you being willing to be called on the spot to provide an overview.
Always happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt motion 2025-12? So moved? It's been moved by Councilmembers Pearson, seconded by Councilmember Bell, that we adopt motion 2025-12. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all very much. That concludes the consent agenda. We now turn to the regular agenda. I don't see any particular items of business, Mr. Coffield. It looks like we proceed right to reports.
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just some calendar updates, if I could. So tomorrow and Thursday, AWC will be having their annual city action days down in Lacey at St. Martin's Hospital, for those of you who will be attending. Also, on Thursday evening, Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound will be having their 2025 Legacy of Hope event, and that'll be at the Hotel Murano in downtown Tacoma. And then on, next week, on Wednesday, February 26th, from 11:30 to 1:30 in the afternoon, the Tacoma Pierce County EDB will be hosting its annual meeting at the Greater Tacoma Convention Center. I know a number of council members are attending that. And then a week from Friday, from noon to 2:00 PM, out at Fort Silicon Park will be the Chief Leshai Honor Walk. And then later on in the afternoon, and this has been moved, given the timing of the Honor Walk, we'll be having the groundbreaking of the last segment of South Tacoma Way from 80th to 88th with Congresswoman Strickland, and that will kick off at 3:30 in the afternoon. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
That was very, very short, but very complete. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Coffield on any of those items? Well, very good. We'll turn to council comments then. Mr. Boke, how about we start with you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Planning Commission tomorrow night, they're having a public hearing on the RTA expansion. PCRC meeting on Thursday night. I haven't had a chance to look at the agenda yet. I'll call into that. And just a remark, I spoke to a young man who won in one of our contests to put up the wraps on the utility boxes. And he talked, and I talked to him about it a little bit, and he mentioned how special it made him feel that he won. He's a young man, and he's really, you know, really proud of what he was able to do. And, you know, he gets to drive by his work. I think he had two wraps a couple of years ago. So just so you know, that people do really take this seriously, and when they, when they get an opportunity, they really do remember it. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I was excited to see and know that we moved forward with the H Barn work. It is important stuff that's being done, and it's good to see continued progress towards their goal. Last week, I attended the Tillicum Woodbrook Neighborhood Association meeting. It went well. They were excited to talk more about the connector between Thorn Lane and Gravel Lake Drive. So myself and Mr. Branstadter had some more detail to provide to them, so that went well. And then I also learned about this gentleman who's starting a chess club in Tillicum for seniors and for the youth, and that was something I was excited about because I was on the chess club in high school. I was a big nerd, was. Right? Not anymore, of course. So, yeah, that was great, and I was excited to hear about that. And it sounds like they're open to donations as well, so if folks want to help out, that would be great. I'll be attending the South Town 911 meeting tomorrow. Looking forward to meeting the new interim executive director there and learning what his goals are. And then, since we don't have a meeting next week, I'll talk about the events happening that week. I will be at the Honor Walk at Fort Silicon Park, and then I intend on attending the groundbreaking event on South Tacoma Way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I went to the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting, and there was a great turnout. I don't know how many people, probably 30 people or something. I mean, it was a pretty full room at the Lakewood Library there. I would encourage anyone that's interested in, you know, seeing what's going on kind of in the downtown to come there, having meetings every other month. I think that, I think that's the schedule every other month. City staff came. Tiffany Spear gave a great presentation, kind of a high-level presentation about, you know, what's going on in the downtown as it relates to the housing development. And people, you know, they just had a lot of kind of questions. Folks weren't sure what was really going on and what the city's role was. And so it was nice to have someone there to kind of answer questions and kind of alleviate some of the, you know, hearsay of what's going on and what the city's role is. And, you know, that, there was a lot of concern about, you know, the vacant buildings, the commercial spaces in the downtown, and so kind of talked about how, you know, a big housing project could relate to, you know, some of those spaces, kind of, you know, having more folks in the downtown to use those spaces. So they seemed encouraged by that. They were initially kind of concerned about both the housing and the commercial spaces, but, you know, kind of realizing that if you get some additional housing, then some of those commercial spaces may kind of work themselves out. So it was, it was a good, good meeting. And then this week, I have the Springbrook Neighborhood Association on Thursday.
Great. Thank you. Just a quick question for you. At the downtown association meeting, there's been a lot of commentary on the social media, getting ready for that, about concerns that some of the multifamily housing plan wouldn't have a mixed-use component in the town center. Was Ms. Spear able to address that comment? Because there's some confusion out there about the areas in which mixed use is a requirement as part of our central business district subarea plan.
Yes, she did. She touched on that briefly and kind of, you know, alluded to the fact that the parcel, you know, is the down, or it's part of the whole kind of town center, and they can kind of use some of that as their mixed-use component. And so, but, but, yeah, she kind of briefly touched on it.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Bell, and then I'll get Councilmember Branstadter, and then the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was nice to see the youth council in here before we have our meeting, so I wanted to remind everyone about the Youth Empowerment Summit on April 12th, and that'll be at Harrison Prep. So they put a lot of work into that, and I think it's just a really, really incredible event. And I also plan on being at the groundbreaking on Friday next week. Thank you.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I did attend the Asia-Pacific New Year's Celebration at the Commodore, and I would compliment you on the remarks that you made that were both appropriate to that event and to being a representative of the city. And I thought that went very well for an event that has always got an element of excitement to it and lots of color, and went very well. That I did get a chance to attend the Tillicum Neighborhood Association as an attendee, not representing the city to do that. And I would also note that when I was in high school, I was in a chess club. So there's nothing disparaging about that, but that the, they discussed the future of their community center and the myriad of things that they have planned ongoing to make it, make it a stronger asset to their community under their new executive director there. And they had a number of things in there that were, they're thinking that they would enhance the community, I think is right on. But it also was that a good number of them were very low-cost, that the most significant cost in a number of those initiatives were to get, was volunteer time, to get volunteer time to be able to go through and do that. But there were a couple of them that, that if they were advanced by a neighborhood association looking for a small amount of funding, something in a, a couple of hundreds dollars to put some sort of a proposal together, such as the two chess clubs, okay? So to be able to go and do that. So I think that, you know, raised the idea that that might be something that we consider as we're starting to see some of the neighborhood associations become more robust. And I think that if we can help them a little bit with essentially being a partner with them, not, certainly not to the scope of where the Partner for Parks for the H Barn, but for them to do that, because it's akin to what we needed to do 10 years ago with the Arts Commission, where we had Arts Commission with good ideas and things to do, but no funding scheme for them. And at that point in time, we came up with a funding scheme, and I think that there can be, we can learn something from Tacoma that does have their neighborhood, what they call their neighborhood associations, have a chance to have a little bit of seed money for something that they would like to do, to go on, when the real impact from the city, okay, is not really that money, but it's the support and the encouraging to do that, and in some cases, some staff assistance to make sure that they are able to do it right. And I think that the Fort Silicon Park Neighborhood Association, the Springbrook Association, the Tillicum Association, the Downtown Association, okay, are all in a state of where if we can incentivize them so that if they have some things they want to do, they're not in a, you know, make bricks without straw mode, but that we can help with a little bit of straw. That I'm, am planning to, 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 to go on the walk and then to the groundbreaking on South Tacoma Way later this week to be able to go and do that. And then I will be attending in the following week the EDB luncheon. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the ALS graduation last week. It was the smallest one that I've attended. There was only like 20 graduates. It was Air Force, Navy, and Coast Guard, so they all combined, but that was the smallest class that I've been to, but it was very nice, well-attended. And that I do plan to attend the EDB breakfast, a luncheon, and I'm contemplating the walk. And this afternoon, I did have the opportunity to go to Olympia and met with Senator Conway, along with city manager and Mr. Branstadter, and very knowledgeable. He's very, very much appreciative and supportive of what Lakewood does. His portion of Lakewood has shifted. Now he's more into Tacoma, but he still looks at supporting the Western State Hospital project as far as the reader board, the digital reader board. We're working on that. Hey, a little more understanding of it after Mike Branstadter did a great job of explaining why we needed that. And so we were real pleased. It was a good meeting.
Good.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. Good meeting tonight. Neighborhood Association comments, I think, are spot on. Whatever we can do, we do have Mr. Davis, who's city staff that's helping to coordinate. I feel a little bit badly tonight. I think the first Fort Silicon Association meeting was tonight, and of course, kind of by happenstance, our council meeting was the same time because of the holiday. But hopefully, they knew that, you know, we were with them in spirit, and one of us or two of us will hope to see them next time. On Tuesday, I attended the coffee with the cops that was set up by the Town Center Starbucks. There were several folks there. It was great to see a lot of the officers show up and mix and mingle with members of the community, and I think they had a good time, you know, serving, serving folks there and being present for general conversation and getting to know one another. So I appreciate their assistance. On Saturday, I did attend the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center celebration that was focused on all things culture, food, and art, and celebration with a special sort of ceremony and dedication for the country of India this time. They had the Indian Consul General, who was recently placed in Seattle. I think it's fairly new, within the last year or two that there's a consulate in Seattle, so it was great to meet him, and he appreciated certainly all the support from the various leadership in the room, because, you know, Lila Pritchard, she's an amazing person, as we all know, and she had everybody there, from Maria Cantwell on down. So, at least by Zoom, and it was, it was a good event. We do have PCRC, I believe, on Thursdays. We'll take a look at the agenda for that. I think that the EDP meeting is one that I am attending, and I plan to do the Honor Walk and the ribbon-cutting with Congresswoman Strickland, but I'll double-double check. I got some the night before that may impact that day, but I'll let you know. And then just in general, the comment on social media, excuse me, on public comment tonight, you know, we all appreciate certainly constructive feedback on things that we can work on and perhaps do better. I'm not convinced that Lakewood has gone to hell in a handbasket in the last 10 years, but that's just my humble opinion. So I don't believe we have a study session tonight, correct, Mr. Coffield? So in the absence of any alibis on council comments, Mr. Branstadter?
Mr. Mayor, your, your, your remarks remind me about the the role that Lua Pritchard has played in, in, in the region and the greater community. And that, I guess that I would note that on the March 8th event by the LMCC, Ms. Pritchard is going to be one of the autories for the Claudia Thomas, you, you know, award to do that in reference to the, or similar legacy that, that, that she, she has done to that, to go on. And then I guess I'll just throw in one piece of somewhat bad news, mixed news, I guess I'll say. I live on Wildair, close to where the library used to be, that I know that the demolition of that building and, and of that site is, is coming along. Okay, there, there, there's really very little evidence that there was a building there anymore. And I know we had talked about wanting to make sure that the space became usable and not just an empty spot to do that. And, and, and we were, we were thinking about what sort of assets did it have? And there were some paved areas and things to do that. But the demolition has moved on to removing all the pavement, all the asphalt, all the concrete and everything. So I'm assuming it's going to then all be hydroceded, and it'll, it'll be, it'll be green, but it'll be a, a tapestry that if we can come to an agreement with the, for some, some short-term use with the, with, with the library district, it's, it's still a, a, a good sizable green spot in a, a place that could benefit from that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Branstadter. Well, seeing no further comments, we are adjourned.